We will open our Board of Commissioners regular meeting, May 2nd, 2024, at 7:08 PM. Ms. Jones, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge, Vice Mayor Butler.
The Board of Commissioners today took matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities, so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We love seeing a good crowd and everyone coming to just check out what's going on in our community. We always invite input and we would like to hear from you anytime you have an issue or something you would like to let us know. We do encourage our community, anyone who has an achievement, whether it be academic or sports, to let us know so that we can put you on the agenda and be recognized. Thank you to Sergeant Hill for our metal detector and thank you for Officer Hoffman. Yes. Thank you for Officer Hoffman being here to keep us safe tonight. With that, item number five is approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0. Item number six is citizens' comments.
There is one tonight, Mayor, Ms. Sue Angra.
Welcome. If you'd please just state your name and address for the record.
Aye. 1392 Fairview Boulevard.
Thank you.
I moved in in April of 2023 to Fairview from New Jersey. I'm very new to Tennessee. Don't know much people here. I purchased a house at 1392 Fairview and not sure what's been going on. There's been a lot of commotion in the streets, usually late at night. I placed a complaint with this town. At least three of them have not heard back, so I'm hoping that someone can respond to me. It's been almost a year.
Can you give me a little more detail about what's going on?
It's just, I don't know myself. I was hoping.
Is it construction or teenagers or?
I don't know. I'm not from here, so I don't know. I'm very new to the area. I was hoping that someone would reach out to me and I can start a conversation that has not begun, so I'm hoping someone can reach out to me. That's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, tell me your address again.
1392 Fairview Boulevard.
If you would, after the, if you're not, well, hmm, my number is everywhere. I'm Mayor Anderson. You are welcome to call me anytime. If you are, if you do leave before the meeting's over, then I will connect with you because I'd like to help you, okay? Item number seven, public announcements, award and recognition. A, city events.
Good evening. I just want to remind everyone that on May the 11th, we're going to be having the Arts and Crafts Fair at Bowie Park. It's going to be held behind the playground in the big open field. It's going to be from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM. And we are still accepting sponsors for our July 3rd event. If you're interested in being a sponsor for that event, please reach out to us. And then we also have our summer movie nights that will be beginning next month, on June the 8th and June the 15th. And that'll be at Bowie Nature Park as well. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from the board of Mr. Ross? Okay. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I just have three announcements or reminders. Budget work session on May 8th from 1:00 to 3:00. And then Builders Summit is scheduled for May 10th here at City Hall from 9:00 to 12:00. And also, please, I just want to remind the board to review the code and send any code review suggestions to Rachel by May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from April 18th, 2024, Board of Commissioners work session. And B, minutes from April 18th, 2024, Board of Commissioners regular meeting.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Items nine, A and B, pass 5-0. Item 10, old business. A, rezoning Fairview Boulevard. We will now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come speak at the public hearing for this item, you can come now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. A2, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-03, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 14.76 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 023, Parcel 053.00, from CG Commercial General to IR Industrial Restrictive.
Second.
Mr. Greer?
This ordinance has gone through the Planning Commission, passed unanimously, and passed the first reading at the Board of Commissioners unanimously. This would be for a business that is seeking to do light industrial work, which is why the need for industrial restrictive versus commercial general.
And just to recap, this is a business that is going to be a great asset to our city of Fairview. Along with our Mechatronics program, where they can offer our students their internship, which is required before they graduate. Also, we will have students graduating in our Mechatronics program that will fit working at this company. So I'm just super excited about Laystar making Fairview their home. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Welcome. We're excited. Item 10 passes, 10A passes 5-0. Item 10B, rezoning Crowcut Road. I will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this project, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item B2, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-04, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 20.2 plus or minus acres of property located at 7431 Crowcut Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 046, Parcel 016.01, from AR15A Agricultural Residential to R21 and 2 Family Residential.
Second.
Mr. Greer?
Keith, can you go to the next slide, please? This property sits adjacent to Aiden Woods Phase 3, which is kind of the long, flag-shaped parcel just to the south of this. And this would be a continuation of that development. There are representatives here tonight. If the board has any questions for the representation, my apologies for not announcing that there are representatives for the previous rezoning as well.
Does the board have any questions?
Mayor, just some notes that I had from the Planning Commission meeting in our last meeting was, this is in line with the 2040 plan. There will not be a new entrance to Crowcut, and correct me or stop me if I say something wrong. But there won't be a new entrance to Crowcut. It'll come from the Aiden Woods. And it'd be an additional 17 lots, so 18 in total roughly, which would be less than one unit per acre on the density that's there.
Correct. The one thing that I would say is, I believe per the 2040 plan, this property is actually called for an R20 pud. We are not requesting a pud. We're not requesting a reduction in lot size, anything like that. We're requesting to be straight-zoned R20. But you were correct. There will be no additional entrance to formal roadway right-of-way on Crowcut.
Any other questions? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Hall.
Upstain.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10B, four ayes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10C, rezoning Lake Road. I will now open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item C2, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning .865 plus or minus acres of property located at 7312 Lake Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, Parcel 001.01, from RM40 Single Family Residential to RS15 Single Family Residential.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greer?
This property sits just to the east of the Richville Development that is currently going in. It is along Blue Finch Drive, which is their access point to Richville from Lake Road. And the applicant has requested the RS15 for the lot sizes to match the same lot sizes that are within the Richville R20 pud development. There is an applicant that is present tonight to speak on any other questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10C passes 5-0. Item 10D, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-07, an ordinance to amend Article 2, Section 103.4 of the Design Review Manual for the city of Fairview, Tennessee, and to repeal and replace in its entirety, Title 13, Chapter 4, Tree Planting and Protection of the Municipal Code for the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Vice Mayor Butler.
Move to approve.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading to clean up the language for tree plant protection. Essentially, it clearly defines and recreates our Parks and Landscaping Board and puts them back to work properly. And then also clearly defines that the Board of Commissioners have the ability to spend the tree bank funds. And so we will be able to try and identify some projects and work on things. It just cleaned up some language where we had some, some things that did not exactly fall in line.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10D passes 5-0. Item 11, new business. 11A, Resolution 17-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of eight citizen members and one city commissioner to the Parks and Landscape Board.
Move for approval, but I do have a question. I want you to get your second.
We do have, we do have Mr. Rosenberg, who has asked to step off of the board. So, um, and we do have.
I'll try my, you didn't get a second. I'll try my best at a motion here.
Well, I think the first thing to do would be to make a motion to approve in a second. And then you can make a motion, then someone needs to make a motion to amend with the names.
Well, I'm going to put that in my motion.
Okay, okay.
Unless you just want to do a motion and amend the motion and.
Or the way I suggested, but if you want to do it the difficult way.
Make a motion. Well, we'll do it. Do you want to second his motion? Make a motion to amend. We did receive a resignation letter from Mr. Rosenberg. I hate to see that. The way that it's written, it brings in the lower terms in for a year. So right now, we have some terms expiring in June. The way that that document was written, it gives it a year for the seat. So my amendment would include to fill the seats that's currently filled. The shorter terms that were expiring in June, put them in that one-year slot. Mr. Rosenberg has resigned. We have an application in front of us for Mr. Buffaloni that we could put Mr. Buffaloni in Mr. Rosenberg's seat.
Second. Okay.
Ms. Teroli, do you have something for us?
Oh.
Right here. Mr. Buffalini's sitting right here in the red shirt. Okay, so do we need to vote on the amended and then vote on the original? Okay.
Mr. Butler, just to make sure I'm clear, this new ordinance recreated the Parks and Landscape Board. And three of them got a three-year term, since it's the first board, and two of them got, or three of them got a two-year term and two got a one-year. Are you, do you want to specify who you're appointing to those terms?
Yeah, I think we follow the current expiration. So you've got, and what you might be, there's three 2024 expirations. Those would be the three one-years. There's one, there's only one 25. So it should have, it should have been even. There's four 26s, so we need to put a 26 on a 25, right? Is that what you're saying? So I'm going to shrink Mr. Doduro, because I know he won't get mad at me, to the shorter term and keep, and keep the other ones, if that's okay. Does that make sense? He'll still be on the board. His term will just expire one year shorter than what it currently lists. But technically, you're already getting a year extra based off the language. Does that make sense, Ms. Jones?
Yes, so the one-year terms would be Mr. Buffalini and Mr. Doduro.
Or the one-year terms would be Sutton, Teroli, Der Willis. Those are the ones that are set to expire quite soonest.
There's only two for a one-year term, though.
Okay. She's, well, on my ordinance, there's only two. So we'll go Sutton, Teroli, working up to that. And so the Der Willis would be, would fill that next row. Is that as much confusion as possible? Got it all figured out?
Restate it so it's clear for the record and for the people watching at home.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, you're wanting the three on here that have 2024 to be appointed to the. You said three-year? And Doduro, Buffalini, and Sutton to the two-year, and Teroli, and.
Currently, there are seats that expire this year.
Right.
They would receive the shortest terms. You said there's too many of those. So we would only do, Teroli and Sutton would be the one-year terms. The two-year terms would be Liston, Der Willis, and Doduro. Three for those. And so then your three-year terms would be Mobley, Rice, and Rosenberg's seat would be Buffaloni now. And then Mr. Hall would be the commissioner's seat for his term.
Okay, gotcha.
Clear as mud. You want me to restate that?
I was about to say, if you'd like to restate the amendment.
My motion, my amendment is to fill the seats as follows. Commissioner Wayne Hall would be his term of office. Mr. Dan Derlis would be two-year term. Mr. David Doduro would be a two-year term. Mr. Zach Liston, a two-year term. Mr. Elmer Mobley, a three-year term. Mr. Neil Rice, a three-year term. Mr. Don Buffaloni, a three-year term. Mrs. Kathy Teroli, one-year term, and Mr. Mike Sutton, a one-year term.
And just one more clarification. I think the ordinance said the commissioner would be appointed annually, not their term of office.
Correct, that's right. Thank you. She's got me.
Okay, so we will vote on the amendment first. Item as amended. Ms. Jones?
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Now, we will vote now on the original motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Mayor Anderson.
Aye. 11A, both motions pass 5-0. 11B, Resolution 18-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, formally adopting the Parks and Landscape Board bylaws.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson. Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 11B passes 5-0. Item 11C, Resolution 19-24, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, designating certain LISO items as surplus and authorizing their disposal.
To approve? Second.
Okay, and Mr. Darty's going to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Police Chief Humphries is out of town. This is our, I don't know how much explanation. I think everybody understands the LISO program. It's assets we give to the federal government. We can hold them for a year and sell them, or we can use them as assets for the city. So we have some that are due that we can, the police department wants to sell. This is opportunity.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 11C passes 5-0. Item 11D, Resolution 20-24, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Keystone Business Solutions and the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
Second.
Mr. Darty?
Thank you. The, this is a renewal of the contract. It's hard to believe it's been one year. We, staff feels like we've been satisfied with our service and would like to continue the partnership and would like your support in doing so. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. 11D passes 5-0. Item number 12, round table, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner McDonald?
I just want to thank the citizens for being so diligent with the Bowie Park situation that developed yesterday. And then extend that thank you to Mr. Greer for taking care of that as fast as he did, getting out there and making sure that that was, put a stop to it. And hopefully, we don't have anything like that come up in the future. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Please excuse my cough this evening, but I would like to welcome Don Buffalini. You've been coming here for a long time, and I'm glad to have you part of, part of one of our boards. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I think all of the city employees for everything they do for us and the citizens. Tonight, I'm going to list the fire department employees and fire, you know, just bear with me. It's a pretty good list. First off is Chief Scott Hughes. The training officer is Jake Warren. The fire marshal, Sean Sullivan. Captain Jason Langford. Captain Kyle Jones. Captain Jesse Woodard. Lieutenant Clay Golson. Lieutenant Brandon Walker. Lieutenant Nick Persinger. Engineer Chad Harrah. Engineer Chad Delano. Engineer Dakota Day. Engineer Jake Duffell. Engineer Sean Grandowitz. Engineer Adam Nguyen. Firefighter John Sheets. Firefighter Elijah Thomason. Firefighter Dana Driscoll. Firefighter Tate Hughes. I believe this is a new one, and I hope I pronounced it right. Firefighter Adam De La Broe. Is that right, Mayor?
Me. Yeah, I wrote it in syllables last time. I think you're close enough.
Okay. And then firefighter Chloe Wilson and firefighter Zach Baker. And I want to recognize Patty Carroll as a new employee here. Thanks. Good to have you, Patty. You know, you and I go back a long way with this city, so I'm glad to see you. You know, you and I go back a long way of this city, so I'm glad to see you here. Thank you, Don, for putting in for the Parks and Landscape Board. It would be a pleasure to have you. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the T-Dot representatives coming out tonight for our workshop. I think we have to stay on them and stay front of mind and do the best we can to try and make sure that they hear us out here. Thank you to the Parks Board for sticking it out with us. As we, as we got this all back on pace, there was, in that ordinance, one of the objectives is to work on the Parks Master Plan. And so we pull that thing off the shelf, wipe off the dust, and get to work on some of those checklists and goals. I think that would be awesome. And excited for you guys. I think hopefully, we'll start getting fun. Welcome to Patty. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Bowie Park is very special to this community. And this board is committed to protecting our park. Yesterday, when phone calls started coming in to me and Mr. Greer, it was after hours. And I want to thank him for going out and trudging through the weeds and walking the long distance to check the entire situation out. We will be, I want our citizens to understand and know that we are committed to making sure that every project that is developed around Bowie Park, the developers and their subcontractors will be held accountable for anything that happens at our park. And I know that Ethan has encouraged and explained how serious it is if it's not protected. I encourage anyone who knows of anything that we need to know about, because we're not always on Facebook, to let us know if there's something that we need to look into. Our community is our, you are our eyes and ears. And we encourage you to call us and let us know, because we want to protect this park as much as you do. And I commit myself that that will happen. And the park will not be jeopardized, and it will be protected through this whole process of development anywhere close to the park. So again, I think Ethan, he went out there, talked to the super, made them aware how serious it is that our park is protected at all times.
Mayor, do you want to speak to what was happening? Let Ethan speak, just to say everyone's aware of what was happening?
I mean, I know what happened, but I'll let Ethan talk about it.
The
On spot.
The developer has hired a contractor to put in their initial erosion control measures within the development. And within that, there was a rainfall event that happened on Sunday night. We were all experienced to it. And they had a pond that had filled up that they were still trying to construct. The contractor on the ground decided the best option would be to pump out the water out of the pond. Inadvertently, that water runs downhill towards the park. Once that pond is constructed, it's built to keep water from getting to the park. But they opted for that. I'm not sure why. Still baffles me 24 hours later, since I was notified, and that has been discontinued. And they're using alternate methods now to remove the water out of the, out of the pond, so that they can continue construction.
Thank you.
That's, I just wanted to try and mention that the ponds are designed to capture the water, to control where they go. Their pond filled up, they're not done working on it yet. They were trying to get the water out and just decided, which they're not allowed to just dump it right onto the park, but Ethan was out there within the hour of finding out and sent some pictures to me. They had a silt sock on the water pump. They were, they were trying, they were doing it wrong, but trying their best to do the right wrong, if that's funny. But so they were trying to try and clean the water as it exited, but, but thank you to Ethan for the update and being there and
I would also like to note that our Planning and Codes Department, for anyone who does not know, is at the entrance of Bowie Park. We're right next to the fire department, 7111 Bowie Lake Road. If you see something in the park that you are uncomfortable with, or have any questions about that deals with the park, go to the Park Rangers. But if it deals with a development adjacent to the park, please stop by our office and let me know. As soon as I know about something, then we can get it taken care of.
And also, if for some reason any of the staff, for whatever reason, cannot be gotten through to this board, I'll commit myself. We're happy to take the call and we'll reach out. So anyway, so Mr. Buffalini, I am excited that you're gonna be on the Parks and Landscape Board. I know that you have been wanting to serve this community for a long time, so we welcome you. I want to thank the T-Dot representatives for coming out and speaking to us. I hope that, like Vice Mayor Butler said, this will be a regular occurrence, so that we can keep them on top of our needs out here in Fairview, because we matter as much as any of the other cities who have traffic issues. And I hope we made that abundantly clear tonight. Welcome to Patty Carroll, our development, Economic Development Officer, and Patty, she knows this community, loves this community. I know that she is going to seek out wonderful businesses to come here and provide our citizens with jobs and just, you know, look towards our future. She's got a lot of contacts. She was with Congressman Mark Green's office for a while and made contacts all the way across state, county, and city. So I'm excited to see what she can bring to Fairview. I got, Ms. Torelli brought this document today that I posted at my shop. I'm so excited about everything going on at the park. Thank you to Keith and Xena and Bree and all of y'all's group. It's a long time coming. The park has not been utilized for quite a while now, and to get that back up and going, and the children, I remember the camps and how much the children benefited and love those camps. So I'm excited that that group has re-implemented that. We've made some good hires and I look to, I look forward to seeing, you know, how much the children, you know, what they get to do. So I'm, I'm just really excited about that. Thank you, guys. We had a situation this past Sunday night. I just want to talk about it for a minute, because it's public service information. So I got a phone call about 9:30 Sunday night, and I guess I didn't realize how sewer works completely. But what happens is, there's a sewer line. And basically, what you put down your toilet and your sink can hurt your neighbor. So we all need to be aware that what goes in the toilet is toilet paper and nothing else. I mean, nothing else. And even those, you know, wet wipe things, they're not, they say they're safe. If you use a bunch of them and you, I'm sorry, I just have to be plain about this. If you don't flush in between, they're gonna clog. And then with our sinks, you never, ever, ever put grease down your drain. Grease can be poured into a glass jar or whatever, but it does not go in the drain. We had a situation this past Sunday. A homeowner called me. I went out. They had been gone all day. Did not realize that the sewer line was clogged and backing up in their house for hours. When they got home, they had raw sewage all on the bottom floor of their house. They called me. I went out there. It was pretty bad. But I'm glad I got to see that, because it made an impact, so that I can hopefully give everyone information that when the sewer line gets clogged, we call WADC, because our sewer belongs to Dixon Water Authority. I've been working with Dixon Water Authority and going to their meetings for a year now. I've got a great relationship with them. I've got to give a shout out to Michael Rogers with Dixon Water Authority. I made a phone call to him. He answered the phone immediately at 9:30 at night, which I honestly wasn't expecting, but he did, and gave me good information of what the, this family needed to do. So when they opened their doors to me and I got to see the green and yellow mess all over their floors, in their toilet tub, their tub was full, overflowing onto their floors, that was not their sewer drain. Their sewer line. This was a sewer line across and on another street. So when WADC came out and they blew these lines clean with high-impact hoses, the clog came out, and it was, it was mainly like a, it looked like a grease ball. So they wanted me to kind of just educate everyone that when, when you put things down your drain, whether it be your toilets or your sink or whatever, it can affect your neighbor. These people are displaced. They're having to have ServPro come out and completely clean their house. So let's just be aware when we, you know, when we do that, that it, it can have really bad effects, and it can clog the lines and back up into someone else's home. So I wanted to save this for last. As Mr. Greer said, when we were reading old business, item 10A, we did not have Mr. and Mrs. Michael Hartman come up. I'd like for y'all to come up to the podium and just kind of, you've traveled a long way today, and just say a few words to our community and the board.
Hi, so we're, Michael and Crystal Hartman, we're owners of Blaze Star, and we are just very thankful and appreciative that everybody in Fairview has been so welcoming and helpful, and we're super excited about, about relocating our business here and can't wait to get, can't wait to get that happening. We're, the worst part of it is, you know, gonna be the waiting to get everything in place to, to get moved, but other than that, we are super excited and looking very forward to it. So thank you all again. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We're very excited for you to be in our community and your business. And also live out here in Tennessee.
Yeah, exactly. It's the whole, it's the whole deal.
I know, I know you're gonna love it here.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest part, is having to travel back when we have to leave. And it's like, I have to be where work is, and I want work to be here, so I can be here, so. But hopefully soon enough.
Thank you.
Thank you for choosing us.
Okay, with that, as I always say, let's keep our community beautiful, and let's pick up trash and not throw it out. Entertain a motion to adjourn.